I'm now speaking with Kathy Cross, at-large candidate for city council. Kathy, you know, I wanted to speak with you here a little bit. You know, why are you running for city council? I mean, that's a...that's not normal. I mean, it's just a headache.
Well, unfortunately, you're right. It's not normal. And I think if more of our citizenry would actually step up and do their best to serve our community, our community would be much better for it. I'm a grandmother on a mission. I have done 34 years of many, many things. And I always felt better when I was helping other people. I was happier while I was out doing something outside of myself. And our family had a particular crisis that jolted me into action at the federal level, state level, with various departments. And I just, with things going, the way they're going as far as, an example, the collective bargaining, personal liberties basically being removed, and other various interests I have in trying to help the city in some ways, made me want to at least try to stop armchair quarterbacking and step up and try to help our community.
You know, you said about there, the armchair quarterbacks, the people who have become hopeless, who don't want to or who won't step up and get more, become more engaged in the process. You know, how were you, how are you different from that? I mean, did something spark that in you?
Yes, the tragedy our family had. Now, I spoke, when I was 18 years old, I was home early from the Coast Guard. And our hometown, which is Wilmington, North Carolina, was waiting for the Coast Guard Cutter Northwind to come into town. It was a big thing. The city had, had, had really had this massive campaign to get the icebreaker more in our hometown, which would bring hundreds of military families and a booster our economy. And it was all a positive thing all the way around. And the families moved to, to, to the city. And the Coast Guard Cutter had to sit out in the ocean for weeks on end because the city hadn't dredged the river to allow them to come and more. So as a fresh Coast Guardsman, I wrote a letter to the editor of my hometown newspaper and explained how it seemed ironic that millions of dollars were spent for a campaign to make this happen. The families come to the communities to get their children set up in school. And now you make dead weight in the middle of the ocean because city council hadn't given approval to dredge the river to allow them in. Which should, in my mind at that time, or even now, seems like that's something you would want to do and have it ready without any delays such as that. So two weeks after my letter to the editor, the newspaper was published, the river was drenched and those gentlemen were home. And they were reunited with their families. And that was like, wow, you could actually write a letter and have something happen. And I did it for my fellow military comrades and I, I felt real good. Now, our, our family, my dad was a businessman and my uncle Phil was a tort lawyer in Alexandria, Virginia. And whenever they were at the dining room table, there was always heated political discussions and I was always just enthralled by the debates going back and forth. And my father always advocated to be involved. And I just, you know, armchair quarterback for quite a while. I think I've only missed voting in two elections in my lifetime. And that was just due to unexpected illness or something.
But that is not an armchair quarterback. Armchair quarterback does not vote. Armchair quarterback that sits back and makes complaints. But you have become constructively engaged in the process.
Well, voting is, voting is a voice. Voting is our voice to say, yes, I, I think this person's ideas more closely represent where, you know, my values and my beliefs and my vision for what I'd like my community to be. But when I, the difference between when I mentioned I got tired of being an armchair quarterback is that when you watch the news and you see the decisions that are being made, you just sit in there and you're going, oh, why did you do that? This could, you know, and you start thinking, what else could have been done? What else could have been explored? Why didn't they look into this? Why didn't they look into that? Well, now, I'm saying I want the opportunity to explore alternatives when what's facing us directly seems to be the only choice. Let's take a look at other ways. Let's take a look at a more neighbor-friendly approach to growth.
You know, once you're elected to, to city council, what are the first things you're gonna do?
I have a lot to learn. I am not a career politician, never even, you know, prior to this thought about it. So I have to work with the team that we have. I have to get information from them. They are gonna need to get information from me because, I mean, I'm really coming at this at a citizen perspective. If you're looking for a city council person that can, you know, draw out the big plans for the next project, that's not gonna be me. If you want a candidate that knows how to map out and coordinate a sweeping public works project, that's not gonna be me. But we have team members on city council that know how to do that. And we have departments that know how to do that. And I, the first thing I'm going to do is do a department, by department, visit and learn the processes that I need to know to help make more intelligent decisions when, when planning and development and repairs or public works are involved. I have a lot to learn in that area and I'm looking forward to diving in and becoming more educated in that.
But one thing that's needed that you seem to have is that enthusiasm. Because when I watch you around other people, you know, they say that enthusiasm is contagious and you definitely control the flow and the spirit in your community wherever you are.
I love my neighbors. I've been in Fort Wayne for 21 years. I came here in 1994.
From?
Originally came here, well, I came here from Dayton. I was working at Western Staffing as a, as a, in the home healthcare staffing areas as an assistant to the, to the manager. And I was there to help perform an audit. There was a J-Code Medicare Medicaid audit coming up. And I was working in Greensboro, North Carolina at the time. And then got transferred up here to take care of that and get it, make sure everything was, you know, ready to go for the, for the inspection. I became, I became ill, had some, had to have some medical treatment in Dayton. And then it was suggested that I move to Fort Wayne. And someone that I had been close to, this was his hometown. And so here I, here I, here I am and continue my medical care with the excellent doctors at the Lutheran, at the Lutheran Grove and, and been here ever since.
You know, once you started mixing it up, well, let me, let me ask you this here. Fort Wayne, I think, once upon a time had about 80 ethnic groups here. The Southside High School was one of the, was ranked one of the most ethnically diverse in the country. Do any of the groups frighten you or how do you communicate with all the types of groups, all types of people? Because right now there is an inclusion movement here in Fort Wayne to create a brand-new identity where everybody feels like family.
Well, everybody should, I mean, we're all neighbors. Yeah, it doesn't matter if you're from Berlin, Mexico, wherever. I mean, I'm from North Carolina. I'm a Southerner, you know? But Midwest values, you know, are in all of our communities. We're neighbors. So, you know, that's why I mentioned earlier that, you know, from a citizen's perspective, you know, I, I want, I want my neighbors to thrive. I want our communities to thrive, you know? Government can't necessarily do that for us. And I want to make sure everybody understands that, you know, although we would like, you know, city council to, you know, be the, you know, be all and end all to solving all of our problems. I think when people take an honest look at Fort Wayne, the majority of social good and community growth and inclusion comes from the citizenry, not from a rectangle table at Citizen Square. It's from our churches, our communities, our organizations, our, you know, all of our nonprofit. That's, that's where the magic happens. That's where the real magic happens. That's where the inspiration is born. That, that's the nebula of our community are our organizations and our neighbors. I mean, we help each other out. I was a, I'll say half-raised by a neighbor down the street, Ms. Hammond. My mom, half-raised, you know, her kids. We were refrigerator families, refrigerator family friends. And that means you can go into anybody's house, raid their refrigerator and you're okay with that. And we're just being neighbors, you know? Watch out for each other. We look out for each other. And if something's not right, you know, we'll engage the government. But we, in our neighborhoods, you know, we set, we, we, neighbors set the tone for how that is. So if there was, there was something going wrong or, you know, I can't even, I cannot even recall. Not one break-in in our community? No, we had, we had, we had the folks racing down the streets, you know, doing drag races and stuff like that. I think that was the most obnoxious thing that we had in our neighborhood. But we had, we had a, I wouldn't call it a, I mean, we didn't have a, I don't know. We just had a better sense, we had a good sense of community. And even in the, what would be determined as a more depressed area of our hometown, that was a neighborhood culture that just couldn't, there was a bond you couldn't break. And I, every neighborhood in Fort Wayne, especially particularly South Fort Wayne, I believe, where I think, in my, in my opinion, as just as a citizen about, I think South Fort Wayne has a lot of, has, the neighbors have a more, more of a bond as a community than, you know, you have different neighborhoods and things like this. This, that's why I like living in South Fort Wayne. It's just a, you know, it's a community bond. And we need to do things more on a community level. But the magic happens with the organizations and the neighbors.
Well, you know, right now, the whole city downtown, we're fighting so hard to create an identity, you know, for ourselves. Because apparently, when you ask most people, what is Fort Wayne? What does Fort Wayne stand for? Apparently, we don't get clear answers from anyone otherwise. But that's why we're in a process of creating an identity. How do you see, what is your vision for Fort Wayne, you know, in their future? How do you want, how do you see Fort Wayne? And how do you want Fort Wayne to be seen on a larger scale?
You said we're trying to find an identity. I think, I think we already have one. And that is community growth and opportunity. And, you know, and that includes business, small business, you know, micro businesses, things of that name. We already have those three things. But growth, as in development, is being more focused on. And community and opportunity are not. And that's where I want to step in. Because our identity is already in place. We just need to uplift the other two areas of community and opportunity to make it more apparent to the outside world that, you know, Fort Wayne, Fort Wayne's a family. We have our lawyers in our family. We have our doctors in our family. We have our, you know, we have a lot in our family. But anyone, when I moved to Fort Wayne, I'm like, what's, what's my motivation? Well, in 1994, jobs were everywhere. There was not, there was not any excuse for not having a job here. And within two weeks, weeks of moving here, I became a manager for a local pediatrician, office manager for a local pediatrician. And boom, just like that. And this is somebody that came from out of state. Never, I couldn't even navigate the streets of Fort Wayne. Had no idea. Map at hand, let's go. And bam, just like that. And, you know, I, I think what kept me here was the family, the community, the growth and the opportunity. But you have to see it. There's a lot, there's too many blinders, you know, there's, there's blinders. And I don't know if they're self-imposed blinders or if, I don't know, if it's the news outlets that aren't focusing enough on it. But Fort Wayne has a fine identity, at least in my mind.
But within that context, you, you live on the south side of Fort Wayne?
Yes, I do.
And some, many have said that the media has shaped an identity for the south side of Fort Wayne that makes people afraid of the south side of Fort Wayne. What does, what kind of facelift does the south side of Fort Wayne? I mean, I understand that when you become, when you become a member of council, you're concerned with the entire city.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, but at the same time, that, that does include the south side. And what improvements or what do you see that's either lacking or that the south side does have that we tend to ignore?
I would like to, I think, first order of business, as you asked me previously, and now that I'm reflecting back on that with this question, is that I think we need a more broad expansion of our enterprise zones. And the enterprise zones that are in place right now have been very fruitful in producing the results that were intended for that. But we need to broaden that out. I mean, as you enter Fort Wayne here from 27, there's, as soon as you hit the city line, there's like nothing. There's nothing until you get up to Tullamore. Nothing here. There's nothing there. And there, there's so many, and so that's, okay, welcome to Fort Wayne. And you look around, nothing. Now, you come in from out of town by losing a hospital off the loop. Everything. Now, I'm not sure that, you know, an ash broker is in South Fort Wayne. I mean, we don't really particularly roll like that here. But there are, I think South Fort Wayne could take a, take a good page from the Wells Street corridor and from our Calhoun Street corridor, what I call the Calhoun corridor. I call it that just because that's what it feels like. A place where you can just get out and walk the neighborhood and hit the bakery or go to the florist or nice Mexican restaurant or oyster bar or, you know, whatever. We kind of, we, we need a, we need a Tullamore corridor. We need a, with, with Aunt Mabel, who, who has the best pies in all of our community. She, and her bakery. Or, you know, Jorge, he's a great mechanic. Let's, let's try to get him into business because he's been working on cars now, you know, in his backyard for however long. But he's, he's got mad skills and he's licensed and he's certified. Let's get his, let's, let's get his garage. Let's get him a garage. Let's get him a bay to, to work on things and...
You break something though. You know, years ago, people weren't encouraged to use their individual initiative, to step out their own faith that they can do things. And it seems as though, in the whole climate here, we're not encouraging that anymore. We're not encouraging that because we are Americans that we can do all things.
I think, I don't know, Eric, I think people are, I think they have the entrepreneurial heart. They just don't have the entrepreneurial bank account. Takes money to start a business. And if you fought bankruptcy or been divorced and your spouse's history, you know, blackened your credit report or, you know, medical bills, you know, there's a lot of things that stand in the way of that spirit moving forward in the absence of, you know, big money. Because, you know, starting a business is not, you know, it's, it's not something you can do on $500 loan for all the job. You know, it's, it takes money. And that's why I would propose to apply to have our enterprise zone completely encompass the majority of what's left outside of it in, in, in South Fort Wayne. And there are other areas in town that are equally empty of opportunity. And let's, let's, let's do that. And then, you know, perhaps down the road after, after businesses have been established, you know, I don't, I don't really know. Maybe we can back down on that. Once everybody's had their, had, you know, had an opportunity to, to grow and thrive. And then when these businesses become successful and, and are thriving, then, you know, have them participate in another level of mentoring youth to start their own business. And, you know, kind of like a domino effect. You know, give me an opportunity, I'll teach you that same opportunity. You, you bring it forth, pay it forward, that kind of a thing. And I think, I mean, we, the small businesses or our community businesses in Fort Wayne are outstanding. I mean, you know, look at Will's Sapwood Nursery, Broadway Nursery, Tom's Donuts. I mean, these, you know, small business people built our town. They built our town. And we, yes, we like to have the larger developments and they bring a lot of opportunity and growth and philanthropic benefits to our community. And we need that. But I think we need the community to feel like they're equally as valued and can bring value. But if you don't have that big bank account, somehow or another, we need to find alternative funding. And I'm thinking, perhaps we could find a way or a grant of some sort to provide like a micro loan kind of a thing.
Well, let me rephrase that. Right now, now, I have no idea how wealthy you are.
I'm not wealthy. Let's just put it right, let's put that out there.
But not a candidate's hard.
That's good.
Yet you are not afraid to stand toe-to-toe with them and share how you feel and in fact unseat some people, so...
Well, I'm not trying to unseat anybody. There's two seats up for grabs. I just want one of them.
Excuse me for this statement. But my, my, my point is that there's a fire or something like that.
Yes, there is.
To rephrase the question, people who don't know you, who have never experienced your warmth and your personality and, and things like that, why would people in Fort Wayne want to vote for you? What can you do for them?
Well, what can I, what can I do for them is help them do more for themselves. Because that's what we're about. We're America strong. We're Fort Wayne strong. We're Southside strong. We're, we're Northeastside strong. We're, we're strong. And, you know, I, I'm not gonna propose to pretend that I can do anything for someone else. But I can explore vessels of opportunity to help you do it yourself. You know, a lot of people, we have a Republican majority statewide, countywide, citywide. And, you know, they all voted for less government, you know? That's, that was their less government. Well, you can't keep pulling the same lever at the voting booth, Eric, and expect different results. So our Republican majority who, who campaign on less government, we're, you're getting exactly what you voted for. So when people say, you know, but you can't do this, you can't do that, or they're turning the screws on regulations or, you know, they're, you know... That's what, we, we live in a democracy. Majority rules. And until the voter who is still in their armchair quarterbacking from there gets up, goes to the polls, casts a vote, speaks their voice, shows up at city council meetings and has their three minutes, nothing's gonna change. So I want to tell the people in Fort Wayne, get out of the armchair, go to city council meetings, express your desires and hopes and dreams for your city and be a part of the movement. I went to city council meetings a lot, you know, as Citizen Jane. Nobody, you know, I didn't know anybody. They didn't know me. I, I didn't go up handshake. I didn't even go try to want them to know who I am. But I still wanted to know what was going on. Something affected me, you betcha, I'd have been right there. But just observing the process, making sure that, you know, everything, you know, I just wanted to, I at least wanted to know. Because you don't hear about everything on, on television. You only hear about controversial things like the collective bargaining or the decision for abetment or something like, you'll, you'll hear that. But you don't get the full grasp of, hey, this company's growing and he's moving over here and we, the council just approved of that. And now, you know, he's gonna be, you know, this project is gonna create X number of jobs and bring X number of dollars into the community. We don't know about that. So when, you know, we, we go over here to a business we'd be going to for a while, then we see a sign on the door says, oh, move to whatever. If we'd have just, you know, paid them a little more attention and attended city council meetings, we'd know and, and we could celebrate that, that business growth with, with them and, you know, be more a part. But we just, everybody's so busy. Their lives are complex and much more complex, I think. My life is, was, is more complex now than it, than it was or that it seems to be, you know, years ago. So...
But just succinctly, you would help them, you'd be a, you would be a good leader for them because?
Because I would help educate them more about the process. I wish somebody would have educated me about the process. How's an ordinance written? How do you, how do you get your voice in there to get an ordinance written? What kind of studies have to, have to be conducted? Should a citizen go to the planning, development? And what kind of questions should you ask? These kind of things. Let the citizens know where it is they need to go to find out the information. Is there? No. Is there an organizational chart for the city of Fort Wayne that's available? I haven't found one. Maybe there is, but I know it's vast. This department does this. Who's responsible for this? Where do you go if you want to plan a business or you want...
So it's...
Where's the map? I want a map. I want to help map that out and help people, you know, and if I need to, you know, I'll try, I'll do whatever I'm able to do to help educate people, you know, to, to, to find these opportunities. I will seek out grants to help pay for their opportunities. I will encourage, you know, growth in, in all, all...
And you'll be accessible.
Oh, yeah. Come on down. And I'm not being, you know, I'm not being, you know, facetious and saying, I'm, I truly mean that. These are my neighbors, you know? No, I'm not a heart surgeon. And it doesn't take rocket science or heart surgery to be able, be able to sit on the city council, by the way. Yeah, he's got a lot of money. And that's, and that's great. Because, you know, that's why he went to school. That's why he learned a trade. That's why he learned a skill that demands good money. I mean, who, who, how can we criticize people who have a lot of money? Now, I mean, like, when the lot of money comes from fraud and theft, you know, that's a different, that's a different thing. But when, when somebody's gone to school, obtained an education for, for a, a skill set that gets a lot of money, hooray, congratulations. that gets a lot of money, hooray, congratulations. If I had a more scientific, scientific thought process, that might have been a good trade for me too. I don't have steady hands anymore. But you know what I'm saying? We should never, I don't want to condemn people that have a lot of money. Yeah? But how about we encourage some growth and opportunity in small business opportunities here so our neighbors can have a lot of money? Or they can be getting on the road today. Or we can, we can plug a class or a workshop in at a public safety academy or something or anywhere else. You know, that's low cost, low or no cost to help build a particular skill or, you know?
Well...
Together.
Kathy, you'll be known as a grandmother candidate in this whole issue.
Yes, I am. Why am I going to be known as that though?
Because you brought it up.
Oh, okay. I guess that's a good reason, yeah.
Good luck with everything, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
And, you know, we just, oh, I'm sorry, one last thing, I got to ask you this here. You know, with all the types of people running in this process here, why is it, why is it so important that, you know, we intend to use this as a forum to inspire and educate younger people too? You know, why is it so important to get your message to younger people? I think we'll close on that note.
Because, you know, I, I suppose this phrase has been used to the point itself, identified as cliche, but they are our future. They're our leaders, they're our future leaders. And I think the youth of our community need to really take a better inward look and change their posture from being, feeling like they are entitled to actually participating in the process and earning their way. I don't know that a lot of people would disagree with me on that, but it, it's one thing to, to feel like, you know, you're owed something simply because you were born. That's, that's not, that's not how America was built. Everybody got their hands dirty. Everybody, you know, drove a nail or riveted or worked in production or, you know, had their local storefront or five and dime or, you know, everybody at a level that they were proficient at built our nation and our city. And I, I do want to, if I, if, if I can, I think the Urban League and the churches in our area are doing a very good job with youth programs. And it would really be nice to see the public know more about that, to know, because not everybody attends church. Everybody doesn't attend church. And there is opportunity here for the youth in a lot of different areas. We have a, a young, young Democrats of Allen County. They are engaged, they are, they are in good, solid numbers and they are out there getting a positive message out. And they understand the importance of engaging the youth. They're the future business people, you know? They're the future bankers and, and leaders of our community. It's very important for people to engage them in volunteerism and I highly, I really do highly suggest a peace corps.
Now, you know, you know, there's one more thing I was really concerned about. There's been a lot of drug busts in the community and all types of efforts to rid that problem of the area. But I understand that you have a unique approach or hatred of drugs in the area.
Yes, getting back to the whole grandmother on a mission thing. My two-year-old granddaughter, Savannah, was in an unlicensed daycare residential arrangement in Phoenix, Arizona. And in two thousand twelve, she was murdered by her daycare provider. And methamphetamine was one of the causes of death. And, or mares, I'm not, which it was, it was determined to be a homicide. And at death, she weighed twenty-one pounds, where she was three weeks shy of her third birthday. She should have weighed about between thirty-two and thirty-five pounds. I want to make sure that as a member of our city council, that we fully fund the drug task force and the Fort Wayne Police Department's effort to eradicate meth and heroin and cocaine from our, our communities. Every one of those three have victims and they kill. And I want to make sure that no other child has to be exposed to that at home and could ever lose their life from something like that ever again. It's, it's hard when you're the grandparent to get an autopsy report, the details, the kind of details we had to learn. It's very difficult to look at autopsy photos and see what meth does to a two-year-old. It's very hard to look at.
Wait, the two-year, they, they, the two-year-old smoked or injected meth? I mean, someone did that too, obviously, but...
It, it was ingested. I'm yet to know if it was forcefully done, but there are indications that it was forcefully done. Until the trial happens, I won't know all of the details. But I have enough to know that it's worthy of my effort to eradicate it at whatever levels I'm able to do that at. And we've spoken in a lot of generalities as to what I think I could do to help on city council. I've got some bullet pointed detailed outline of what my main interests are that I will actively advocate for. And of course, I'll conduct, you know, the, the usual business of council as that flows. But I do have some very specific things and that's on my website at electkathycross.com. And the citizenry can go there and read about crisis management, my position on the homeless, my position on the infrastructure and development and growth and the enterprise zone expansion that I hope to see accomplished when I'm serving in city council. But thank you for asking me about my granddaughter. It was a horrible, horrible thing as anyone can imagine. And grief cycle takes you in circles. And now I'm at the point, as Mark Twain once said, I believe it was Mark Twain, I'm not, said that there comes a point in your life when sitting on the sidelines is no longer an option. That's where I am today. That's why I want to serve and I'm ready to get busy for Fort Wayne.
Thank you very much. And thank you for watching.